The City of South Padre Island on the Fourth of July has their Walking Beach Parade. It's Beach Access 21. It starts at that. Carolyn and Coral Lee lineup is at 9:00 a.m., starts at 9:30. And we finish at Beach Access 17, which is Jupiter and Mars. There'll be watermelon, water, and giveaways while supplies last, so we hope that you all are there. So appreciate that. Um, I don't have any other public comments or announcements. Does anyone from the board have any public comments or announcements?
I'd like to talk about the event that occurred at the new skate park. There's a big, it's called Skate Bash, Beach Bash, competition. The park was packed and kids had a ball even though it was pretty darn hot. But it was, it was an all-afternoon event, a lot of prizes, a lot of community support, a lot of families. More importantly, it's also good for tourism because I would guess about 90% of them were from out of town. Staff, Parks Department, everybody did a great job in pulling this event off.
Anybody else have any public comments from the board? Anyone from staff have any public comments from the...
I'm gonna piggyback on you a little bit. We have a couple of pictures and I think over, over the time, a picture's worth a thousand words because everybody loves to see the pictures after the fact. But July 4th morning, nine o'clock lineup, starting at 9:30, we do some giveaways at the beginning. It's always a really fun day on the island. Everybody comes out, it's very festive. We have the beach park with their flags usually, you know, line up and set us off going. The mayor's there. We've got the Friends of Animal Rescue. Lots of fun, families, really look forward to it every year. And we do a lot of neat stuff. We've got the police and fire always represented, junior guards in the beach patrol.
Schlitterbonn always helps out. They do a good job. We appreciate it. Or beach park.
Absolutely. Public work sets everything up for us. Code enforcement's out there and the shoreline department makes sure the beach is all ready and looking beautiful that morning. And then we've got watermelon at the end and waters and lots of fun. Family way to start off your morning of the Fourth of July. So come out and join us.
Thank you. All right. Anybody from the public have any public comments or announcements? Our hearing none. We'll move on to item number four, which is presentation and proclamations. And we'll go to 4.1, which is our proclamation for special needs sports fishing capital of Texas. I asked Shane to keep this short, so we'll see how long this really is. All right. City of South Padre Island proclamation. Whereas Fishing's Future, founded here on South Padre Island, is an organization dedicated to helping families build stronger and deeper family bonds using fishing, sport fishing as an educational, recreational, and conservation tool. And whereas Fishing's Future believes that all individuals, regardless of age, gender, religion, ethnicity, political affiliation, economic status, or disability, both physical or mental, should have an opportunity to learn how to fish and is providing educational opportunities through the ICANN program here on South Padre Island. And whereas the City of South Padre Island is a world-class sports fishing destination as it is surrounded by the Laguna Madre Bay to the west and the Gulf of Mexico on its east. And whereas Fishing's Future is bringing national attention to South Padre Island's fishing opportunities specifically for families with disabilities through their educational programs. Whereas the City of South Padre Island recognizes that roughly 2.3 million individuals living in Texas have a disability and that everyone represents a family. And now those families have a designated fishing destination where they love, where they will be welcomed. South Padre Island further expresses our sincere gratitude to Fishing Future for their time, dedication, passion to facilitate the special needs sports fishing population. There are 54 million individuals in America with disabilities and we invite them all to come down to go fishing. Therefore, I, Patrick Muley, do hereby proclaim June 22nd as South Padre Island, Texas, as sports needs fishing capital of Texas. And witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused to seal the City of South Padre Island to be affixed on the 22nd of June 2022. There you go.
Can I say something?
Sure.
But, but can you catch fish?
Get him out here.
You got three minutes.
It's, it is a true honor. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. It is a true honor to have you guys proclaim this, this evening. The leadership that you are demonstrating right now goes way beyond each of us in this room. The leadership that you're doing is setting the bar for every city in the state of Texas and there beyond to make South Padre Island, which is already a world-class fishing destination, more accessible and inclusive. I am honored and I am humbled to stand amongst the folks that had this kind of vision in order to do this today. I thank each and every one of you because this is nationally newsworthy for a city to say, please, we welcome you, we are inclusive, come on down and check out our waters. We want you to come down. Requires tremendous leadership and it's, I'm a proud Texan, I'm a proud South Padre Island this evening. The ICANN program is very big. We've run four programs already in the last 20 days. That's one every five days and I've turned down about six or seven people. Families, families. So you guys doing this, we're just gonna keep it going.
Explain to that because that, you know, I want everybody to know what that ICANN program that you started is phenomenal. Explain a little bit about what that is. You have my permission to keep talking.
Of course, talk.
Thank you, Carrie. The ICANN initiative was something that I have wanted to do for a long, long time. And it's a boat, it's a 26-foot tritune pontoon boat, or it's a tritune, not a pontoon, a tritune pontoon boat. That, there's a lot of folks on here that have tritunes and pontoons that take families out. There are other boats across this country that have lifts on them to get them from the dock to the boat and the boat to the dock. When I met Tim Lippold, who's my captain, Captain Tim, I asked Tim, who used to be a captain, a long, long time ago, grew up here, and I said, "Tim, what is it that you miss the most?" He said, "I wanna get in the water." And I said, "We'll make it happen." With him and his, his ICANN attitude, he's the key that makes the ICANN so successful. If you haven't watched the videos of what we have been doing, we took a quadriplegic about five or six days ago and put him in the water. My boat, the ICANN, and it's not my boat, I apologize for that, it's our boat, guys. It's our boat. Everybody in here owns a part of that boat. If you live on the island, this is a part of your boat. Let's use it to bring more people down here. But this, this chair, we put this quadriplegic in the chair and lowered him down into the water about right here. And then his dad took him out of the chair and for 20 minutes he splashed around. What it does for the parents to see that, two days ago or yesterday, this gentleman right back here, Chris, wave your hand, please. Chris will tell you what the ICANN did for him. He's 20, two decades plus, T7 spinal cord injury, been in that chair for 20-some years. He got out in the water yesterday and he said, "I said, 'Chris, why did you wanna come to us?'" He said, "'Cause your boat can put me in the water. Your boat puts me in the water. I wanna play in the water.'" And we fished and we caught fish. Not a lot of fish, but we caught fish. And we saw dolphins and we saw turtles and he got to experience the beautiful pristine waters of the Laguna Madre. And this all started, thank goodness, it all, it all started, I had a vision and I had a dream. I met this, this man right here, which was the last puzzle I needed. I went to the EDC and they gave me the seed funding to start the program. South Padre Island EDC, I was able to take that money there. We got a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife, which Texas Parks and Wildlife's down here today. They shot a show yesterday filming Chris and Tim and I out on the ICANN. They're finishing it up today. We're in the, the July issue of the Texas Monthly Magazine. I just saw it today and it mentions the ICANN. We're getting national exposure, guys. And I'm just so grateful to be a, be a part of the program, to have the vision to do it, but to have you folks right here. Guys, incredible. Please, please, please. It's bigger than you. It's bigger than you. No longer will we be known as the South Padre Island Spring Break Party Capital of the World. We will be known as South Padre Island, the special needs sport fishing capital of Texas.
Thank you.
I'd love a picture, Patrick. Do you wanna say anything? Please.
Again, thank, he thanks you, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is beautiful. Not only do we get to help families that are, have special needs, but it's awesome for me. I never thought I'd get on the water, right above, help other people. It's a blessing for me. It's absolutely, so thank you.
Chris moved down here from someplace else, Missouri or something. He said he came here because of the ADA accessibility we have on our beach. And he, he raved about it, that's why he came down here. Now we're moving over on the other side. Chris, I'd like you to come up here as well, please. You've been on the boat, you can, you can attest to it. This is so nice. I'm truly honored, truly honored.
Shane, I gotta say, you've been an incredible asset to our island as well and proven our quality of life.
It's good to be able to have everybody as friends up here, so that's what makes this island so special.
My daughter calls him Uncle Shane.
All right. So next we'll move on to item number 4.2, which is presentation by the Rotary Club of Port Isabel, which is the first responders of the year award. I think Ken and Carrie are gonna take care of this presentation. So Ken, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the Rotary Club of Port Isabel honors the local heroes. The first responder year awards Rotary International and the clubs at the local level recognize and honor those in the community who are exemplary in serving others. The 2022 first responder of the year award honors firefighters, police, EMS personnel who have served above and beyond the call of duty. I'd like to just take a second and recognize four of my Rotary Club members, Mr. Gillum, Mr. Charles, Mr. Lackey, and Fletcher. And with that, I would like to go, the first recipient of Lance Hobbs began working for the City of South Padre Island in December of 77 with code enforcement, 20 years ago and remains a valued team member of the class of 1990. And just...
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
It's not 100 years old.
He says 1977.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Been born then.
Eighteen seventy-one.
Yeah.
I was trying to, I was trying to, you know, you know how Rico is.
Six years old, protecting the public.
And anyway, he began working, police in 1997, his hometown of Rio Hondo, and worked for Cameron County Parks Rangers and then came with the city. Carrie, if you wanna talk to the fire department?
Absolutely. You ready? I know how to read. The individual being recommended has been a longtime member of the South Padre Island Fire Department. He was hired on October 16th, 2017, and has proved to be a major asset to the City of South Padre Island. He has been eager to learn and to take as many training classes and certifications as possible. At times, he is questioned how he's able to keep up with all of them. He is always seeking advice on how he can improve as an employee and move up the chain of command. He is eager to apply for all the positions and very much a leader, poised to move higher ranks within the department. He is a first to volunteer for assignments, first to lend a hand, first to mentor new firefighters, all without the orders from ranking officials. He is a self-motivator and innovator that everyone respects. He has never had a disciplinary event in his career with South Padre Island Fire Department. He will remain an asset to not only the City of South Padre Island, but to the entire Laguna Madre area. Recommended for first responder of the year is Lieutenant Jose Trevino Jr.
Send their families to come forward, please, and their respective chiefs for some photos as well as the members of the Rotary Club, please.
Next up is 4.3, which is a presentation from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, USA's, on the Regional Sediment Management Plan that was partially funded through the Planning Assistance of States Program. Erica, since Christine is not here, I guess you get the honor of presenting this.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Erica Houston, Coastal Coordinator. I told Nikki earlier, you're getting the A-minus team because we're not the B-team. But you're getting a good team tonight. We are gonna go ahead and have the Army Corps present their findings on their region sediment management plan. And we're gonna hear a lot from Jason Thieves, Ruben Trevino, and Patrick Kerr. And can we go ahead and get that pulled up from the Army Corps team, please? You are ready to present.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm pulling it up now, just one moment.
Jason, yeah, we can hear you. Victor, if we can get a little louder audio for them, or if you guys can talk a little closer into your mics, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, let me know if you're able to see the presentation. Should have the title slide.
We can see it.
Okay, great.
The floor is yours, so go ahead when you are ready.
Thanks so much, Erica. My name is Jason Tease. I'm a coastal engineer with the U.S. Army Corps Galveston District. Through the Planning Assistance in the State or PAS program, we've been working in a collaborative effort with Cameron County and the City of South Padre Island over the last several years to gain a better understanding of sediment transportation in the region and to help inform decisions related to the beneficial use of dredge material, or BUDM. For those of you unfamiliar, this effort was initiated with the Sediment Tracer Study in 2018, which focused on the transportation of dredge material placed as nourishment at a nearshore berm known as Placement Area 2. I'm here to present the findings from a follow-up study that utilizes a refined numerical model and field data to improve our understanding of sediment transportation throughout the region. I think you'll find the results from this study to be compelling. It reproduces key findings from a very recently released study effort conducted by H.R. Wallingford on behalf of the Texas General Land Office, showing that for the last 50 years, the commonly-held understanding of sediment transportation in the region is largely incorrect. But first, let's start with a bit of history for context to what follows. The history surrounding the construction of the Brazos Santiago inlets in 1935 offers, offers a historic insight into regional sediment transportation. The Bureau of Economic Geology at UT Austin has studied historic shoreline movement dating back to the mid-1930s. The annual rate of shoreline movement between the 1930s and 2019 is seen in the top-left image and from 2000 to 2019 in the bottom image, with seaward advance or accretion indicated by yellow to green colors and landward retreat or erosion indicated by yellow to red colors. As you can see from the figures, the historic trend shows shoreline advance north and south of the jetties over roughly three miles in either direction. More recently, the trend has held on South Padre Island, but we no longer see advance along Brazos Island. The entire island shows retreat, increasing with proximity to the Rio Grande. But what was the shoreline doing prior to construction of the jetties in 1935? According to historical records, shoreline movement trends were very different. The entirety of South Padre Island experienced net retreat, while Brazos Island simultaneously advanced with the highest rates of advance seen near the Rio Grande. In other words, jetty construction in 1935 completely reversed historic trends. For roughly 50 years, the commonly-held belief has been that net longshore sediment transportation in the region is directed towards the north, in the opposite direction of transportation along the upper Texas coastline and converging at roughly 27 degrees latitude, as seen in the image on the left. This understanding is rooted in the predominant direction and duration of wind and waves relative to the shoreline orientation. As seen in the wave rows, waves most consistently originate from the southeast, which drives northward transportation, whereas a smaller percentage of significantly larger waves originate from the north. Additional evidence supporting conventional wisdom includes sediment accumulation on the south side of both Brazos Santiago inlet and the Port Mansfield jetties. It has long been assumed that this is the result of net northward transport in the region. However, conventional wisdom has had a difficult time reconciling the northerly transport in the region with historic trends discussed in the previous slide. If regional longshore transport is to the north, then why did construction of the jetties in 1935 induce rapid onset erosion on the previously accreting Brazos Island? The jetties should have only increased shoreline advance on Brazos Island if northerly transport was accurate. So in the remaining slides, I'm gonna provide evidence that net longshore sediment transportation in the region is actually to the south. This offers a better explanation for historic trends and is substantiated by multiple recent studies, including the 2018 Tracer Study, the 2021 GLO Study, and this study. Conventional wisdom underestimates the impacts from severe weather events, which drive episodic transportation. Summer months are characterized by consistent but low magnitude wind and waves out of the southeast, which does drive northward transport. However, severe weather is most common in the hurricane season and during the winter, when large-scale transport occurs over short periods of time. Hurricanes induce southerly and offshore transport through their counterclockwise rotation, and winter storms similarly drive southerly transport with larger winter waves and current fields that propagate from north to south. In the figure on the left, winter months are highlighted. In these months, the wave direction changes often, but the largest waves consistently originate from the north, driving southerly transport. Over the simulated period, average significant wave heights are 70% greater in the winter months. These large waves are capable of moving large quantities of sand located at much greater Again, net southward longshore transport offers explanation for post-1935 jetty construction trends, where northward transport does not. Further, I'd like to offer an alternate explanation for the seaward advanced position of the shoreline south of the BSI and Port Mansfield jetties. First, at these locations, the shoreline held a seaward advanced position prior to jetty construction in 1935 due to the net southward longshore transport. Second, the hydrodynamics surrounding jetties are much more complex than at shore perpendicular groynes due to tidal influence. As seen in the Google Earth imagery from January of 2011, rotational circulation patterns called eddies are induced by ebb tides. These circulation patterns occur both north and south of the jetties, depending on seasonal patterns. During winter months, sediment is deposited south of the jetties as the return flow stagnates near the south jedy. The sediment that accumulates here is offered additional protection from strong winter waves propagating from the north. The model captures these rotational circulation patterns seen in the Google Earth imagery. Each frame of this animation represents hourly output from the sediment transportation model over the month of January 2020. Arrows indicate direction, while color represents the magnitude of sediment transportation. With red being the highest, you will see eddies form both north and south of the jetties during ebb tides over the simulated period, along with reversals in the longshore transport direction. However, the strongest transportation is consistently directed southward. And I'm just gonna speed this up and pause it so that you know, so that you can see the comparison between the Google Earth imagery and what the model is capturing here. So very similar circulation patterns during the ebb tide. I'm not gonna spend too long on the technical details. However, I think it's important to understand how the model was validated. This is the first known sediment transportation model in the region that validates model results based on changes in coastal bathymetry. Bathymetry being underwater topography. Typically, models are calibrated to navigation channel infill rates, which frequently underestimate changes that occur nearshore and offshore. The simulation period was selected based on availability of survey at the nearshore berm PA2. Survey from February 2019 is used for the model's initial conditions, while July and October surveys are used for validation. On the left, you'll see a comparison between measured and modeled results. Depositional patterns are remarkably similar between the modeled and measured changes. The model does underestimate change, most notably in comparison to the July survey. However, the model shows close comparison to measured changes in October and to the seasonal pattern of erosion and accretion in general. So this slide is primarily included to show the scale of change that takes place over short observation periods and ultimately to reverse the notion of gradual change as it relates to sediment transportation. Due to the episodic nature of sediment transportation, shorter observation periods and smaller spatial domains generally yield greater changes. Over the long term, these changes are averaged out and long-term trends can be mistaken for gradual change. Extending the observation period helps us to understand actual trends and should speak to the value of long-term data collection efforts. In the top-right graph, you'll see what looks like a lot of noise. These are changes in shoreline movement that occur over short observation periods of one to two years. Pay attention to the scale when I click the mouse. The new graph on the top-right shows incremental changes relative to the base survey, which are averaged out over a five-year period, indicated by the purple line. In the bottom-right chart, the five-year average is... In the bottom-right chart, the five-year average is shown relative to much longer observation periods of 20 years or greater, indicating the scale of shoreline movement relative to the observation period. So this slide reiterates the notion of episodic transportation with an example. Research indicates that longshore transport is dominated by severe weather events. Related statistics derived from multiple study sites indicate that 50% of longshore transport occurs on the most influential 5% of days. The model output shows similar results. Isolating and extracting model output over the most influential two-day periods from the most influential summer and winter months, May and February in this case, of the simulated year, shows that 15.5% of net southward flux occurs over 1% of winter days and 9% of net northward flux occurs over 1% of the summer days. These statistics are essentially equivalent to those cited from separate studies, if you extrapolate them. Winter months are more dynamic with frequent directional changes, while summer months are milder with increased directional consistency. So the left image here shows the net longshore transport direction from the 2021 GLO study with the black line work. The red line work shows results from this study superimposed over the nearest transects. While there's some differences in the results, both studies indicate net southward directional flux. Differences between results are mostly attributed to differing simulation periods. The GLO study simulates the year of 2018, whereas our study simulates mostly the year of 2019, which is characterized by much stronger winter storms, particularly in February and December. The graphs on the right show net longshore transport over summer months in yellow, winter months in blue, and net annual transport in black solid lines at the two transects pictured. And the dash black line shows the crossshore elevation profiles. So from left to right, this slide shows results from the sediment tracer study, the GLO study model, and our model. The output is from a transitional period near the end of August to beginning of September. The sediment tracer study shows frequent reversals during initial campaigns that took place over this period, though there was little explanation for the results at the time, given that northward transport was anticipated based on the conventional understanding. Both models show output that indicates the complexity of nearshore circulation patterns during these transitional periods. The time of year is characterized by frequent reversals in sediment pathways, both over time and space. Further, all three studies indicate a pattern of southward transportation over the winter months and net annual southward transportation annually. So the results from this study and others indicate the need to reevaluate the BUDM placement strategy based on seasonal considerations in the regional transportation pathways. The recommendations seen here are intended to extend the life of beneficially-used dredge material for BUDM and subsequently mitigate channel shoaling by refining recommended placement locations relative to the availability of the beneficially-used dredge material. The seasonal availability of BUDM is dependent on navigation channel needs. However, while we cannot control the time...
Hey, Jason, we lost your audio, but I'm pretty sure you're on your last slide here and your recommendations for our further placements later at time. The Corps has done a really good job. I don't know if Ruben or Patrick, you all have audio still, but the Corps has done an excellent job on also recommending where we should be placing our material during these different seasons. And I'm just going to go ahead and wrap up for them. If you all have any questions, I will be happy to forward that to the Army Corps team or anything else.
Metter's wishes he had this like three months ago, this ebb tide creating that eddy south of BSI. That's why it keeps getting stuck over there in south. That would have helped him.
All right. So, all right, we appreciate the Ellen. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ship them out to Erica.
Erica, they're still talking about that offshore berm as far as, you know, the sediment that's coming in. We have the tracer.
They do. So they fully incorporated both studies, so they did their own, and they looked back at that as well and compiled them together, and it was showing that we still have that south sediment transport. So everything's pointing to that sign, which is really helpful that they ended up doing this because how long have we just thought everything was moving north, you know?
Right, right. That's good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll do item number 4.4, which is presentation of badge pinning by the firefighters' paramedic Neil Waters, Chris DeLeon, Oscar Gonzalez, Emilio Hinahosa. Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council, City Manager Jim Pigs, Fire Chief, South Padre Island. So in the fire service, there are many traditions, from the shape of our badges to the Maltese cross, the ringing of the bell to the badge pinning. It is a proud tradition with firefighters significating the introduction of department members to their new duties and welcoming them to their new positions. The new officers also have the ability to pick a significant other to do the pinning during this ceremony. The gentlemen who are here today have taken their careers to a whole new level. They have provided the leadership qualities by obtaining proper licenses, certificates to match the job descriptions of their new assignments. Some have taken classes for firefighter certificates, associate's degrees, bachelor's degrees, while others have also attended the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. All have served with the city of South Padre Island for many years and hopefully will continue to have a future where they will continue to grow in their careers and to continue with their education and to serve the island residents and its visitors for years to come. The youth is our future here on South Padre Island, with the exception of Mr. Waters. It's our responsibility to lead, challenge, encourage this youth, and hopefully prepare them to one day to take the reins. So at this time, I'd like these gentlemen to come up and your significant others to
You're still a lot younger than Ken is.
All right. Yes, just wherever. At this time, I'd like to present Mr. Neil Waters, 17 years. He is promoting the position of captain. Mr. Christopher DeLeon, six years, promoting to the position of lieutenant. Emilio Hinahosa, seven years, promoting to the position of engineer driver operator. And last but not least, Mr. Oscar Gonzalez. He's been with us for nine years, and he is also promoting to the position of engineer All right, ladies and gentlemen, I give you new officers for the city of South Padre Island Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Good job.
I like one of those hats.
One of these? That's another one of those crazy traditions.
You get a hat like that after you join the French Foreign Legion.
I've already been.
All right, now we'll move on to item number five, which is approved consent agendas or a motion to approve by numbers 5.1 or 5.7.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So next, we'll move up to item number six, which is regular agenda. We'll go to 6.1, which is discussion of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the early final completion incentive with floor equipment for Laguna Boulevard Construction Service agreement.
Mayor, City Council, Alex Sanchez, Pro-Law Director. This is an incentive to finish the project sooner. It's $500 per day for each day that they finish early.
And basically, it's between a spread between 590 days and 760 days, or 790 days. We're trying to encourage them to take off a year and a half of the, or, I'm sorry, three-quarters of a year, or two-thirds of a year off the map.
That's correct.
Is there any other discussion? Do they have any comments?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's get her done.
Thank you.
All right, item number 6.2, discussion and action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Hanson Professional Services or additional services related to the wind and water sports venue biological assessment and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit. Now, we don't have them on technical difficulties right now. Go ahead, Erica.
Good evening again, Erica Houston, Coastal Coordinator. So we are looking, like you just said, last council, we did approve the contract. Hanson came back and said that they had some alterations that they would like to have made on the contract. Those are listed in your agenda on the agenda item. I'll go over them for everybody here. Those are going to be changes on page two, three, and seven. And we actually have Hanson representatives here that can answer any of your questions. My written notes, page two is for insurance purposes, better coverage overall. Page three is rewritten for insurance, so damages aren't caused or paid for uninsured parties. And page seven is where we have our topic of interest, which is a request for payment efforts of satisfactory application not granted at the agency's discretion of approvals. And I'll go ahead and let Hanson introduce themselves if you all have any questions
My name is Richard Riggins with Hanson. I'm a professional engineer with the company, Design Engineer.
Do you have any questions?
Good afternoon. This is Paulina Vega. I'm on the line as project manager for Hanson Professional Services.
Is there an expectation when you feel we're going to receive the permit?
As discussed in our previous meeting where we had with the property owners, we are estimating about 24 months from the date of notice to proceed in order to have these permits approved. Of course, that is, you know, dependent on the Army Corps as well.
24 additional months.
Yes, sir.
So...
Wow.
I need some help here.
So what exactly are we changing in that contract?
Just some of the insurance language and indemnification, but the one thing that was not mentioned was the council member Rico's request for some sort of retainage until the permit is acquired was totally eliminated from this revised contract.
Why was that eliminated? I thought that we, I thought we requested that.
We can't, there's no way we can anticipate what the Corps is going to do or how they're going to do it.
No, but we were told...
Or how long it's going to take them.
May I please?
We haven't been able to anticipate much of what the Corps is going to do in this process, to be honest.
I just, I was in a meeting about two years ago where I was told eight, 10 months, and now we're saying another 24. That'll put this over, you know, almost at five years. I need some help here.
That's depending on the Corps.
I'm not, I'm just not, not, don't have a lot of confidence. This is why we picked your group, because you said you could close this out quick. We're beyond quick, and now we're talking about another two years.
These have, these, this new agreement has come to light with the changes that were requested by the property owners specifically.
We're moving the property line.
So that's what the addition for the 24 months would be.
I just turned it on.
We're making it smaller. Everything should be in place.
Yes, however, the mitigation plan has to be redone. Our biological assessment has to be rewritten, and there needs to be some changes to the original submittal for the 404 permit.
How is the bio, with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife yet or not?
That's, but the biological assessment has not been submitted by the U.S. Army Corps to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
It was my understanding that when we had last had a conversation with the Army Corps was that they were going to allow the biological assessment to be sent to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And I thought we got a confirmation on an email from them saying that they wouldn't do that. Is that not correct?
They were going to submit it, however, we stopped them from doing that because of these new changes that were coming. Because if not, we would be back to the original size that they had approved for parking lot A, and now we are trying to expand that.
And this is all because when we met with the property owners, that they wanted property A to be expanded from 60, 50 places to back to the original 100 places.
That's correct.
And so this is going to add an extra two years to the process that we'd already, when we originally submitted it, we were going back to just the original, what we had originally submitted regarding parking lot A, right?
That's where estimate, that's what we're estimating, sir, yes.
Well, the one thing, the one thing I'll say is that we did approve the change order in the dollar amount, and the contract is cleaning up a few things, I guess. I do have concerns that, and I didn't say it last time, but, you know, it seems like it's to the benefit of Hanson to draw out this contract as long as possible so we can just keep adding more fees to it, and that we really haven't had a really good fight with the Army Corps regarding this. I don't know what's the best move, whether or not to just submit our, the original plan without expanding it, except for the fact that that's what our property owners would But with that note, it's to submit it, I guess we're, you know, I think a lot of the work had been done since it was already originally designed, but I'm not going to get there on that discussion. But it's going to have a unique cost of time, but then again, we haven't been ever accurate on our time since we started this project.
Would it help to have a conversation with the property owner?
We've already done, we've already done that.
Well, the property owners...
The property owners want us to build the park.
They're extremely frustrated with this process. They have really, there's, there's just a lack of confidence that's increasing greatly every day.
It's because of their requested changes.
It's not, it's not because of their request.
Oh, okay.
This is, we did a first submittal, a second submittal, a third submittal, a fourth submittal. I believe we're on our fifth or sixth now.
And the idea is to just go back to the bigger part.
The fourth submittal, that's when we find out about the mitigation land? I'm, I'm as disappointed with Hanson as I, I mean, I'm... I'm as disappointed with Hanson as I, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, folks, I don't have a lot of confidence in y'all.
Well.
You've missed every timeline so far, so far.
You know, I've worked, I've worked for the Corps before, and I know it takes a long time. I also.
I understand, I understand that, but we're, if we would have known last year, you know, on the first submittal, about the mitigate possible.
In February of 2020, when we met here at City Hall, you all had the original plan. You all spoke to the Army Corps. It seemed like there was a lot of confidence in being able to get this project completed. The fact that we are here now 26, 27, 28 months beyond that, we're going to spend another $90,000 after we've already spent half a million dollars, I think, on this whole project already, and we haven't gotten anywhere, movement forward from zero. We haven't gotten like a one. I mean, if you're going, if your goal was to get 60 miles down the road, we haven't even gotten half a mile down the road. And I don't know.
Is a property owner aware it's going to take another two years?
That's what I was trying to get at.
I don't think that, I don't think that anybody really understands why it would take the amount of time that it has taken or for it to continue to take additional I personally have feelings that sometimes it just doesn't, that people don't, that organizations just don't work well together.
I thought, that's why we brought this group in, though. They said we do work well with the Corps and the GLO. That was the point. That's why we paid the premium for this.
No, I agree.
That's not, that's not what's happening. It's not, that hasn't happened.
They have.
I'm extremely just, it has not.
They have.
It's not. I've been to every meeting. I'm the one who put this on the agenda, whatever it was, 30 months ago. I was at every meeting with the interviews with the different firms that came in. I was told eight to 12 months. That has not happened, sir. Not at all. We're going to start over.
We can't control what the, what the U.S. Army Corps response to this has been.
I understand that.
If you go through the timeline that we've submitted to you guys, you know that we've, you know, given several submittals to them, and in some cases, they've taken three to four months just to respond back to our submittals.
I understand that, but on the first submittal, when you don't mention the possible mitigation, I mean, that, we wait till the fourth one to bring up things like that? That's unprofessional, very disappointing.
I don't know if this is appropriate.
All right, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this contract subject to the landowner increasing the option period on the property for additional 24 months. If the property owner does not want to take that deal, we won't increase, we won't, we'll terminate this amendment.
I'm not.
There'd be no need to pay him or do a contract if we don't have the.
If we don't have the property owners signing on the dotted line saying that they're, right now, our extension's only six months. So for us to commit ourselves to 24 months without having a lead, without having an option for six months is ridiculous. And when we had this meeting with the property owner, it was all kind of discussed, well, how long do we need to extend this? And now it's 24 months, and we would have extended it longer at that point in time. So I think we have an obligation to the property owner to advise them that this is what we're saying, and, you know, we possibly will have to figure out a different direction on it.
Wasn't there some resistance, even six months?
Resistance quite a bit, and not on their part. It's just they find this extremely frustrating as well, and, you know, here we are. But we can't extend this for 24 months if we don't even have the property tied up for 24 months. So.
Let me, let me second it for a reason of discussion, because I wanted to discuss it.
Sure.
A little further, uninterrupted.
Yeah.
All right, I've got my second. All right, when this thing started months ago, years ago, we had the yellow-breasted pulver, we added a prehistoric snail, we had vehicular traffic, we had on and on. I would like for somebody, it's the young lady on the phone, to go on record that the Corps of Engineers is what's hold of this. Anybody do that? Because I got people asking me. Is that possible, Mr. Hanson?
No.
That's going to have to come from Paulina, because I'm not the manager.
I'm sorry, what, I guess I don't understand what statement you want me to make.
That this project is being held up for reasons of the Corps? Is this a yes or no?
That is correct. The Corps has not been satisfied with, with how the project has been presented, and they're the ones that are not issuing the biological assessment and submitting it to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife as submitted.
So Patrick, that's an affirmative to the Corps, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, yes. That's why we've had so many revisions. Yes, okay. But our problem is, is that we don't have, we don't have an option period on this property for 24 months. And that was, when we were having this discussion, 24 months wasn't brought up, so.
Well, the thing is, what, what I'd like to say is that I don't even, even if the property owner would give us the 24 months, I'm, I don't know, because we're already losing tourism because of not having this. We hear that over and over and over, and, I mean, maybe it is time to explore other options.
Switch horses.
Well, this horse hadn't gotten out of the gate.
Mayor, I'd like to also just remind everybody that if you look back at the beginning of this project, all the grandiose designs and everything that was there, we've done nothing but reduce, 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 yet we still can't get anything done.
Yes, that's true.
I just, Mayor, I'd like you to retract that, make a motion to table this, like to hear from Hanson this week, like to have a meeting with them.
Well, I think.
If they, if they value our business, because I'm, I am as disappointed as you can be, and I have no faith right now. So if there's something that could change my mind, I'd love to meet with y'all and talk to you, but this, this is a, another 24 months is absurd.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, and again, if we withdraw, your second?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Rico made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess there just needs to be a little more.
I couldn't, yeah.
So.
Neither, I'm, yeah, it's very frustrating.
I've been trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and it ain't going to work.
All right.
The swords.
It's good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to item number 6.3, which is discussion of possible action to authorize 310 Padre Boulevard as a designated area that allows mobile food unit pursuant to section 10-31D. Hello, how you doing?
Hi, I feel like it's 5 o'clock somewhere, isn't it? Good lord. Next time, I'm bringing shots for everyone. So my name's Angela Mitchum, Mayor McNulty, thank you for, and councilmen and women for letting me address you. I'm hoping this doesn't take two years. So we are officially here to request the Pearl as a designated location for a mobile food unit. I wanted to introduce myself. I haven't had the chance to address everyone. My name's Angela Mitchum. I represent Highline Hospitality and the Pearl Hotel Ownership Group. I have lifelines back here. I have Stephen Provostical, who is also with Highline. He's my partner in crime, and I can say that because there's no police there back there. I have Ron Midler, who is our new general manager. He actually moved his family here as of 9:30 last night.
Oh, wow.
So he's got three beautiful kids and a wife and two dogs.
One dog.
And one dog.
That was my ex-girlfriend.
Oh, we must have lost the other dog. That's it. Ooh.
Your evening, your first evening here like this.
We're having all sorts of fun. Okay, I know that each of you received a packet, but I wanted, in speaking with Victor, who's been super helpful, the fire marshal has been very helpful, I wanted to get ahead of a couple of questions that you might have on the food trailer. So, with that said, I'm assuming this, I feel like I should say she's a beaut clerk, but she is beautiful, and I want to talk just a few moments on why we decided to do a food trailer and not another restaurant in the back of our pool area. So we are, as you know, going to be a Margaritaville, and Margaritaville is all about fun and escapism. And in taking that, in looking at the architectural designs, we had originally looked at doing another restaurant in the back, but we just didn't feel like it dovetailed great into fun and escapism in South Padre Island. So we decided to go forward with the food truck, and we designed it, purchased it with a group called Concession Nation. They're one of the best in the country, and they actually provide food trailers all over the world for military hospitals, also restaurants, Margaritavilles, and resorts. So this is one beautiful picture of her. This is the second. I want to talk just a little bit about the trailer and some things outside of the packet that you saw. The trailer, we have in here 12,000 pounds. It's actually, I think, around 9,280 and stuff, so. The trailer is brand new. It's not used. It's custom-built. It's outfitted to be 100% self-contained, so we can take it out on the island if we wanted to. However, we wanted to make it easy because we feel like we're going to be serving a lot of people out of the pool area, so we did go ahead and build it in, and make it so that it can go into the infrastructure of the hotel. So we have it so it can be hooked up to freshwater, city water, electric, and sewage. With that said, it has quick release, so it's kind of, I called the trailer company, and we've looked at it. If we had to, I don't know, get out of there in 10 minutes and come feed you guys, we supposedly can release everything in 10 minutes or less, pull it out. And then we purchased a super duper duty motorized trolley dolly skid steer so that we can pull it out of the location and move it to the front of the property if we needed to. One thing I also want to say is that environmentally, it is self-contained grease trap, and, and so all of the grease will be removed, just like our kitchen, grease and land shark that has been approved and inspected by Victor and team, and so that is a self-contained grease trap unit. We take it out and put it in an area that we dump our, or dispose of our grease from our kitchen. The other thing to note is that we do all the preparation in our land shark kitchen, and then we bring it out to the trailer for final production. So it's going to be fantastic food. We have a chef that we hired that's local and grew up on the island, Chef Donnie Watts. I've been to your restaurant a couple of times. Have you already? I just started thinking when everyone was up here, and I, I wanted the full crowd here because I wanted to invite everyone, but I think it's a, it's really, we're excited about the development, I'm telling you. We are spending a lot of money, time, and creativity, but we appreciate everything going on. So, because it is 5 o'clock somewhere, what questions can I answer for you that you guys are, have any concerns, thoughts, questions?
Motion to approve the change of designation of the Area 310 Padre Boulevard.
Second.
Yeah, I'm actually perfectly happy with the gray water going the right place, being plumbed in, and having the right grease containment, actually using a commissary, all that fun stuff's actually a pretty good deal.
Thank you.
Permit application, a smooth process?
It has been very smooth, interesting. And I do want to say, we've, you know, the island is new to us. I'm actually a native Texan, and actually, bungee jumped here when I was 18, so we do come full circle. But I cannot tell you with all of our developments, the staff has been amazing. I have to say, the folks who have answered my panicked phone calls have been great, and I'm a raving fan. I really am, so thank you.
Thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that one.
Yeah, I know, because you're trying to take my phone calls, aren't you?
All right.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
Where did you bungee jump at?
I bungee jumped over by Louis' when I was in college. Things have changed here.
Nice.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Seeing that there's no other items on this agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.